For January thirteenth, the time is now six thirty-six. If you'll please rise for your vote of allegiance.
Please, to the leg of United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, I'm not sure if I'm allowed to make any comments, but we celebrate our six-year anniversary one month from tomorrow on Valentine's Day. And I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of everybody that's been affected by the church. I just left a meeting with a young teenage guy who's trying to make some better choices in his life, and we got it down to three, one's a really bad one, and the other two are pretty good, school or work, and he's gonna choose one of those two. We fed about one hundred and twenty families on, just this past Monday night at the food truck that we do. And because you guys approved us to be in a warehouse, we were able to just pull that truck into the warehouse and close the doors, and one hundred and twenty people were inside and were able to give them their food. The truck driver said a lot of places had to cancel because of the weather, it was so bad on Monday, so, anyway, thank you for that.
Just over here goes, that's second place church.
Second place church, yep, 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 so thank you. Lord, we just come before you, Lord, and we just thank you so much for being our God and being so generous with allowing us to be a part of the story and allowing us to actually have a choice to do right, to do wrong. And so, Lord, today we just ask for wisdom. Lord, we said that if we were to ask for wisdom, that you would give it, and so, Lord, we just ask for it right now, that you would give us wisdom for this meeting, or that everything that's discussed would be discussed clearly and with wisdom at the center of it, Lord. So, I just pray that every decision that needs to be made tonight would be made well and all the discussion would go well as also. Lord, I pray for the village of Moni that you would give it favor and bless it as it tries to improve the community and for the families that live in this area. We thank you for all of this, in Jesus's name, amen.
Joe, if you would, make sure you pass on to your father-in-law how much we're gonna miss him around here.
Yeah, I will.
Trustee Gray. Great. I understand trustee Holston will not be here?
He is.
Trustee Horn. Yes.
Here. At this point, we'll go to open the public agenda items only. If anybody has something they'd like to say pertaining to the agenda items, come to the podium, give your name, address, and let me kind of sort of answer if you could. Anybody? Okay. Let the public entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Make that motion. Pop and Razik. Roll call, please.
Trustee Gray.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Razik.
Yes.
And Ganzales.
Yes.
Let's report.
I'll report.
Okay, I've got one thing listed, and there's a couple other I just want to bring up that one of the department heads reminded me of. First one is, I think annually, we named the Chicago Southland Convention of Visitors Bureau as our visitor bureau. I guess it's kind of almost redundant the way this is said, but it's just formally as a recognition, and that helps them help us through grants and other opportunities that we try to pull visitor traffic into this general region. So, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution. Make that motion.
Second.
Gray and then Razik, and then, on the resolution number, please.
Twenty sixteen dash one.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Horn.
I'm sorry.
Do we have to have that in writing, the resolution?
We do.
Sorry.
No problem.
Yes.
Speaker.
Yes, I was doing roll call approval, but do we need something in writing?
No, 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 that was just a discussion issue, that's not a problem.
Okay, we've got an eye for trustee Horn, Pop, please.
Yes.
Razik.
Yes.
Ganzales.
Yes.
I'm sorry, the other one was actually under the administrator's report. Administrator Bautista is also the, our director for emergency management, and he is presently going before the Will County Emergency Management. EJ, if you would, I know that you're familiar with what's going on with that process. It's a, is it a full association acceptance for us to be part of the mutual aid program?
Correct. We're associate member, and we've got to vote through that in that, and that's tonight if the roll call acceptance.
Right, good. So, that's why he's not here tonight, is because he's been doing other village business on our behalf. But, under his report, we have a discussion in the November and December board meetings, I believe especially as it relates to parks and rec activity, where Joe specifically had requested, since it seems to be standard practice to simplify November, December to a single meeting, that seems like it, historically, I think, we've done almost every year. I think this last year, what we did was we ended up putting it in the middle, so we split the difference for the month, so we had the third Wednesday instead of the second before. And so, we're simply requesting that that be considered, so that she can deal with schedule, I think, more appropriately for programs and other activities that may need to go on around that time. Also, and I just found out this week, yesterday, day before, that the Will County Government League is doing their Springfield Lobby Day, and that's gonna be the same night as our first meeting in April. So, I don't know if the board would be inclined to, because oftentimes, I like to go, sometimes staff will go, sometimes trustees will go, as they have availability. We don't necessarily need a decision about who would necessarily want to go to that, but it would be nice to know that we don't have a scheduling conflict with the meeting. So, I don't know if we're better off in that case as well to split April, where we simplify that, and if we have a need for a special meeting of some sort, potentially development or some other issue that is of a timely manner, we could always call it a special meeting, because we've done it fast. So, what I would like to hear is some feedback from the board, or a motion, or whatever, is a motion would be appropriate. November, December, partly because of the holiday issues, but then in April now, because of the scheduling conflict, trying to make sure for municipality is represented well when it comes to legislative affairs in Springfield, and we don't want to be left out of what's going on as far as trying to show the support for getting the right things done down there on our behalf. I would request that we consider having April, November, and December the third Wednesday, or simply in April, we could just simply bypass that first meeting, which would be the second. So, whatever your preferences, I would like the opportunity for those that are interested in going, be able to attend. So, November, December seems easiest to have that, the third Wednesday. April, I'd definitely do the same thing there, against splitting the month.
Mayor, may I say that, in my opinion, we don't really know what's gonna be going on by that time.
Correct.
So, why don't we just, you know, move that meeting to the first Wednesday?
That'll work.
And still have our two meetings.
That'll work.
Because there may be a necessity for that, you know.
Sure. First of all.
I suggest that we change the meeting to the first Wednesday.
For April.
And our second meeting remain the same.
Which would be the fourth. I know that's a capitol of the police commission, but we've, we definitely, but it's not to say we haven't tag teamed and had duplicity of meetings going on at the same time.
Still friends, George?
Always.
I think that's a very good recommendation.
I would make that motion.
So, for the April one, we move to the first Wednesday.
Correct.
And for November, December, it would be the third for both. So, trustee Pop's making that motion, somebody want to make a second one? Second with trustee Gray. Roll call, please.
So, I'm clear on that, the first meeting would be the first Wednesday, and the second one would remain the fourth?
Correct. The first meeting would be April sixth.
Yeah, let's just go ahead and put that date specifically, so we got that.
Let me have those together, April sixth and April sixth.
April sixth, you got it, Doug?
That's the date.
So, we're changing to April thirteenth to April sixth, that's all we're doing on that one. That's simple, so we're not changing the other one.
Correct.
And then, November, we're simplifying the, you got the dates for those, Doug?
Yeah. The third Wednesday of November is the sixteenth.
And thereby eliminating the second and fourth, which would be, which are one of those dates, so, the clerk has that correctly.
Well, eliminating the ninth and the twenty-third.
Yeah, that way.
So, it's now sixteen, and now the sixteen.
Instead of nine or twenty, or sixteen.
And then, the third Wednesday in December is the twenty-first.
And, yeah, is that right?
Yeah.
Three motions, or three separate issues here?
No, hold on, so, let's take a look at that here.
But Christmas is until, that's a Wednesday?
December twenty-fifth, which is in the twenty-third.
All right, sorry.
Which is on a Sunday.
And for anyone.
And probably why you get a holy day of obligation on the.
And just in case everybody's wondering, the clerk has identified that it's acceptable for everybody to have Easter off as well, so, because that's always on a Sunday.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so let's just, so on December, for the simplification there, now looking at that calendar specifically.
You have fourteen?
Yeah, just simply eliminate the twenty-eighth. Is that, trustee Pop, since you made the motion, are you okay with that adjustment?
So, it's November sixteenth only in November, December.
December will be the fourteenth only, eliminate the twenty-eighth. And as we've indicated in the past, if there's a reason that something needs more immediate attention, we'll call it all together and get it done. All right, so trustee Pop made the motion, you're okay with that adjustment?
Is this all one?
Yes. Yeah, one, one, yep. And do we have a second for that?
Yes.
Trustee Gray, and.
We were just checking school calendars, too, to make sure that they answered the rates.
Understood.
Thought you'd graduate.
Motion, second, roll call, please.
Trustee Horn.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Razik.
Yes.
Ganzales.
Yes.
And Gray.
Yes.
For the rest of the trustees, I'd like to sit over here and let trustee Ganzales sit by herself, that would do okay. I don't believe we had anything else under the administrator's report. Larry, do you know anything else that was, you touched on? All right, we'll go into the officials' report, Public Works, trustee Gray.
Just a reminder, speaking with the superintendent, with the snowfall over the weekend, please have your cars removed from the streets, so they can do their job properly, and you do not get a ticket from Moni's finest for having your car in the streets. Again, it's double work, they're in, and they are very cautious, they try not to knock down mailboxes, they don't want to bump into cars. So, with that, that's the end of my report.
Let me say, I'm sorry. Next, we have Park and Writ with trustee Ganzales.
There is always going to be a lot of, uh, we're, yes. Speaking in the snow, it's the perfect time for the Moni Parks and Recreation, do you want to build a snowman contest? Ages five to eighteen can enter with without the rest of the family. The snowman must be made with snow in Moni, so you have to live here to make your snowman. Judging based on originality and creativity, and entries must be received by twenty ninth of February. All they have to do is take pictures, and they can mail them into us, and we'll go from there. But we are asking for the pictures to have your house in the background, and also the people who made it. Also, Moni baseball registration starts, started yesterday, we do have it posted in our newsletter, and also, we will have it on the website, so if anybody's interested, tell our website. Thanks.
Finance with trustee Horn.
Yeah, I just had a comment about Public Works, I know that our little snow we got here, what was about three inches or so in the last few days, I saw the Public Works trucks, they were what I thought going above and beyond the color duty, cleaning the roads, and so, just commend them for that, thank you for that. As far as finance, villages levy ordinance and tax payment ordinances have been filed, we looked on those last, I believe, the last meeting, but they've just filed with the Will County Clerk's Office. And we are now starting the budget process for the fiscal year 2017, so we'll be, as a board, working on that in the next few, in the next few months.
Trustee Horn. If I could, just remind each of the trustees to interact with your departments, that you're liaisons to, to help make sure that the relevance of the budgetary issues within those departments are being addressed, so.
Right. With the next couple of board meetings, the finance department will be presenting possible policy manuals for the following. Minimum fund balance policy for the general fund, investment policy for the village, debt management policy for the village. So, those, we've never had policies for those, as far as I'm aware, and it is good to have, be fiscally aware and have policies for all those things. General fund expenses are sixty-three point eight of budgeted expenses, so pretty much right where they should be, and the state still did not pass the budget.
This development, trustee Holston, as mentioned earlier, is occupied with corporate execs that came in for his facility that he's at, and Kevin, do you have anything you'd like to share at this point?
So, quite simply, I know we've been speaking about it for a number of board meetings, but the Will Cook Enterprise Zone application has been certified, that correspondence came from the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity on December eighteenth. It's a little later than what we had expected, as such, the implementation of the zone has been slightly delayed, but since then, I've been meeting with representatives from staff of each of the four other communities, as well as staff members from Cook County and Will County, meeting on a weekly or every two weeks basis, in order to ensure that the program is implemented as described in the application. To this point, the Will County Recorder and Cook County Recorder both have accepted all the documentations incorporating the zone, and the Illinois Department of Revenue just yesterday issued a pin to the zone, so we have a few minor things that we need to do in order to have it live, but I expect that by the next village board meeting, we should have this substantial economic development tool available in our toolbox for accepting benefits such as a building materials tax exemption certificate, which on building projects exceeding fifty thousand, I believe, is the threshold of materials, that building materials acquired in excess of that amount can acquire those materials, if purchased in the state of Illinois, free of sales tax, which is no small benefit. There are a few other incentives available through the program, but that is the most known.
Workforce development is one of those.
There's some workforce development incentives, there also is a utility tax exemption, but some of those require a minimum threshold of investment. There are other incentives available through the zone, there are administrative state level, like de-edged tax credit and others, which require multi-million dollar investments, but for just about anyone within the zone, if your project is in excess of fifty thousand dollars in materials, you can have a fantastic incentive available pending certification through the zone. Beyond that, I know recently, we, in the last board meeting, acknowledged that there are two video gaming parlors which are in process of their licensing. Once the state of Illinois certifies them, then they can move their project from the licensing stage to moving, looking towards the building stage. That's all I have for tonight.
What is the approximate location from both of those?
On Moni Manhattan Road, there would be one in each of the strip plazas on the south side of the street, so Lamel's Plaza and First Midwest Crossing.
And what is the maximum number of, just so everybody knows, are we allowed to have any other gaming parlors beyond that?
No, two is the maximum, there were, there were two licenses.
That was a perfect way to structure our license, and because we didn't want to create an unfair competition, if you will, with our local bars.
And also add that seeing that there is a video gaming parlor on Moni Manhattan Road that happens to be outside of the village Moni's jurisdiction.
Correct.
It's good to have some competition for that, so that.
Trustee Horn.
The economic development zone, do you know what means they're using to publicize that to businesses?
In the application process, there was a survey, more or less, that was done, in order, included with the application were letters of support or intent from a number of businesses within the zone who were, the letter was essentially stating that they would utilize the benefits of the zone. So, you have a number of businesses already on board, each municipality or each jurisdiction will be at sharing the news of the program locally, as well as the zone will have its own dedicated website.
So, I would suggest that be very prominently displayed on our website as well.
Certainly.
Did you get over to the other person, your correct?
Yes.
Building Services, trustee Pop.
Yeah, I have two items here. New Beacons Fire Alarm System, which is usually the hardest one to get a patient firm it on, is completed, they're in the final stages of completing the build-out. Derby Meadows Homes, they're in the final stage of their first unit build-out, they'll have a model open soon for people to view on Derby Drive.
Good. And for those that don't know where Derby Meadows is, it's just west of San Mohamed, easiest way to describe what's there. Public Safety, trustee Razik.
Yes. Moni Blue Men are back in action March fifth, two p.m. at the Mantino Sportsman Club. They'll be freezing for a reason at the Polar Plunge for Special Olympics. You can find a donation link on the village website, and hopefully, you can make a generous donation to the Special Olympics for the Moni Police Department. EMO, we're gonna be doing a presentation next meeting regarding the drone purchase, because there's a big uproar about that over the winter break, so we're gonna be doing a nice little presentation on that to show the public what they're all about, what they're really used for. And at this time, I would like to call George Pearson from the Police Commission to come to the podium, and he has something to present to the board.
Mr. Mayor, Chairman, the Police and Fire Commission has completed their hiring process, we now have a final eligibility list, and the personnel on it are ready to go. The names will be posted at the Police Department, and if you guys have any questions.
The list is good for all?
Two years.
Okay. How many people are there?
There are three going at this.
How many do you start with?
We started with thirty.
Does that mean they're being hired or considering?
Well, that, they're ready to be hired with the consent of the board.
Okay.
How would you form with that process?
Well, the names would have been submitted already to trustee Razik, and the chief will need to sit down and figure out if the budget has already been maintained, and then I guess you guys will take the board.
In order for that to happen, we have to change the physical composition of the Police Department, as it relates to the full-time personnel. I believe, in the same way we've done for Public Works and different ones like that, when we, when we want to increase the size of the department in full-time capacity, I believe we have to define that by ordinance, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So, we would actually have to take forward action in order for that to take place. In the event that there is a vacancy from somebody retiring, or quitting, or whatever else, a vacancy of that sort would allow the Police Commission to work without the board's necessary need to be involved, because it would simply be, the commission is there by state law for a reason, to operate in that realm. But in the case of the situation here, we were required, because once we exceeded five thousand of our population, we were required to form a police commission. So, while that had been started, meetings had not taken place, or whatever had, you know, formalized that process, so we'd actually started with a whole new police commission to make that happen, so they can move forward and actually get that accomplished. Very commendable to everyone that's on it currently, and was on it previously, that contributed to where it stands today. In regards to hiring full-timers, that's something that as a board, we probably should have further discussion as to the relevance of, I know that I had told the chief over two years ago, almost three years ago now, before I presented the board to hire any full-timers, that I would expect him to provide at least six additional part-timers. During that time, he has provided us a net increase of one part-timer. So, I don't know if there's a lack of interest in having the full-timers, but the Police Commission, hats off, commendable, you got to done your job, done it quite well, thank you. As far as our readiness to actually hire full-timers, I think we need to have a balanced approach, the part and full-time, and until we've reached that balance, I think that that's a decision the board will have to make, so thank you.
I might say that personally, I'm a personal vote, George, but being a trustee, I can do this. I appreciate, I think you were a great choice, the mayor made, to chair that commission, and I have all the respect for the names you are putting forward. So, we'll see how the chief feels about it all, at least I want to see, and thank you for your hard work. You're welcome. And your commission.
Thank you. Under Attorney's Report.
Thank you, Mayor, I have one item for the board's consideration. It's in accordance authorizing the Will County Historic Preservation Commission and Will County Designate the Moni Creamery as a county landmark. An individual came to the board roughly about a month ago to recommend this creamery to be such a designation, if the board deemed appropriate, then would send this to the Will County Historic Commission. There are certain rights and obligations we have once it is designated, so, but the first step would be to pass this ordinance.
Okay. I know there was a very good presentation made before, part of that, I believe, the discussion ensued with concern that there was going to not be any mandatory, burdened upon the. the discussion ensued with concern that there was going to not be any mandatory, um, burden on the village for maintaining it according to any particular standards or anything else. It's simply a designation for interest. It is not a designation that oftentimes like national, uh, monument of sorts has to be maintained to a certain era-specific, whatever else, um, which would be nearly possible considering all the infrastructure we have going through the basement of the building and everything else. So with the presentation made before, and now that it's actually on the agenda, we weren't able to take it last time if it wasn't on the agenda, but now that it is, I would entertain a motion to approve the landmark status through the Will County. Thank you.
Discussion.
I'll second. Okay, so we got Pop and Razor?
Discussion, I'd like to just say though that, uh, Cook County is very, very strict on if something becomes a landmark. And I'm not saying that Will County is lax at all, but exactly what you said, man, we're not locked into tremendous costs there.
Correct.
And we're not forced to do very much at all, so.
Right.
That's my reason for moving forward.
It's, 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 there's no loss, there's no loss for the village. Roll call, please.
Trustee Grasic?
Yes.
Gonzalez? When you approve it? 1-7-4-0.
Trustee Gonzalez, just, just, just as a clarification, I believe, I, I, I know what you're asking, but I don't believe an ordinance number would be issued if it wasn't passed. Right? I'm, I'm not sure, is that correct, Larry? So, okay, I just wanna make sure I understood it correctly. Okay, that's right.
So was that an eye?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
And Pop?
Yes.
Oh, just 'cause you just work hard on it.
And at appropriate time, we would love to have a photo. No, commemorating the cats, right here. We could, but.
But trustee Holston's not here.
I know.
Next board meeting. I'm sorry.
17-40. 1-7-4-0.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you. Do we have anything under old business? Anything under new business?
I have something.
Sure.
It's come to my attention that a lot of residents have been complaining about people speeding during the, in the school zone at the Moni Elementary during school hours. Is there any way we can get a police presence over there for like an hour in the morning and an hour in the evening?
Trustee Razor, I've asked for that since school started.
I brought to the board's attention, the public's attention, I just wanted to bring that up.
I try not to make an embarrassment of.
I'm not making an embarrassment, I'm just asking a question, just get some police presence there for like an hour in the morning and hour in the evening. You go to the high school or any other school, there's a police presence and then, Moni Elementary, we don't have a police presence there.
And again, I have asked the chief specifically, unless his officers are engaged in something else, to be in proximity to the school. The fact that out of the last two weeks, there's only been an officer there once, maybe twice, is frustrating for me. It'll be addressed.
That's all I have then.
Anything else? Sure. What were the public knowledge items? Sure. Is that your assumption or I don't think we have anything else?
No, sir.
The time is now 7:11, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
So, Razor, roll call, please.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
And Grasic?
Yes.